Good evening, all in school committee to order Thursday, April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. First order of business is the reading regarding the recording.
Good evening. This meeting will be recorded and will be posted to YouTube and other social media platforms. By participating in this meeting, you understand that the recording could contain your video stream or your audio stream, including images of yourself or anyone in the room with you. If you choose to enable your video or audio device during the meeting, as well as anything or anyone else that may be in the background could be recorded. The recording could include any opinions you contribute and anything you say about yourself. On occasion, chat within the meeting could also be captured in the meeting recording. Therefore, anyone attending the recorded meeting may have aspects of their personal data recorded if they actively participate or not.
Thank you. Before I do roll call, I'd like to just welcome a new member from Hardwick, Crystal Kelly. Welcome. And before I do roll call for attendance, welcome. And anything we'd like to have to say, I just wanted to welcome you, we'll get you some information in regards to some obligations, and then please feel free to get involved as much as you'd like in subcommittees. I'll speak with you and welcome you. Jessica, the superintendent are always available for you as well. So is there anything you'd like to say now, or you want to hold off? It's up to you.
No, I just, I'm excited to be a part of the whole group. And I think, I mean, for us, it was important that Ned served the community for a really long time. And I was excited to be able to kind of take the Kelly name into the school committee again, hopefully for the next forty years.
Well, again, thank you.
He didn't tell you everything.
Well, she told me that she's Nettie's favorite daughter-in-law.
Roll call, please.
Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. DeShipp isn't here. Mr. Willannon?
Here.
Ms. Kelly?
Here.
Ms. Garvey?
Here.
Ms. Cartier?
Here.
Mr. Chamberlain's not here. Ms. Cormier?
Here.
Mr. McDonald? He's not here.
Okay.
Mr. McDonald? Just joining. He's still connected. I'll go back to him.
Okay.
Mr. Wiggler?
Here.
Mrs. Thompson? Here. Mr. Nutter?
Yes, here.
Mr. Jean-François? I don't believe it.
He's not gonna be here.
Okay. And Mr. Chairman?
Here.
And Mr. McDonald?
Here.
Thank you.
Good. Again, thank you, school committee members still attending. I know we had our meeting. We moved it around last week. And then, and then we mentioned that we may have a meeting tonight strictly dealing with a budgetary perspective. And that's, we have one item this evening. It's the FY twenty-four budget update, and a vote will be required afterwards, I believe. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Wiggler and Cheryl, and we'll go from there, the superintendent.
Good evening. This is our third budget meeting, the first one after the public hearing. We started off, our first budget, our preliminary budget was a ten point four percent increase. And as a result of our last meeting, we brought it down to a seven point nine percent increase. And it currently stands at thirty-nine million, two hundred and nine thousand, forty-one dollars. We are in the process of, we had some House Ways and Means revenue figures came out. And I believe that the principals were working over the course of the last few weeks on their budgets to see if there's any areas they can reduce. And I will now turn this over to Mr. Ball.
Can we go next to the shore?
Are we still at seven point nine mark?
Seven point nine.
So the House Ways and Means budget did come out yesterday. However, those numbers have not been issued on the cherry sheets yet. The allocation by district has not been done. I pulled a couple strings. I got somebody's cell phone number, and she was able to give me our numbers. So they're not supposed to come out until tomorrow afternoon, but we have what we need to get going tonight. The House did add things to the budget, and they've made some pretty hefty promises here. Although Chapter Seventy Minimum Eight was only increased by thirty dollars per student, so a total of sixty dollars per student for us next year. So that's another fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars in Chapter Seventy-eight. Charter school reimbursements have been funded at two hundred and thirty million, and this means nothing to me, and it'll mean nothing to you until we see what it means for our district itself. But they also increased special education circuit breaker to five hundred and six million. And I've read that that takes into consideration the fourteen percent increase in tuition that the commissioner gave to special education schools. So we'll see what happens with that. Rural school aid was almost doubled to ten million. It fully funds regional transportation at a hundred and seven million, at one hundred percent regional reimbursement. I have a comment on that later.
We can't believe that, can we?
Yeah.
No, I do not believe that, Doc Towne. It also fully funds transportation for homeless students at twenty, students at twenty-eight million dollars. Again, that doesn't mean anything until the cherry sheets come out.
Can I just interject one piece of good news on the rural schools increase? You may remember that when the governor put seven million in for rural schools, she made it a grant program. The House has reverted to the typical rural schools formula. So that's good news for us because we were, there was some worry around what the criteria for that grant was, as long as that remains through the budget cycle.
So we've made some, not only made some changes to the budget for tonight, we've also made some changes to our revenue sources because both of those assessments to our member caps. Reminder of where we were, like Mr. Wiggler said, where preliminary budget was over forty million dollars. And in our first round of budget cuts, we brought it down to thirty-nine point two million dollars. For tonight, we are proposing these changes that are in your packet. I think it's also in your drive if you look. We're projecting that we could make cuts of three hundred eighty-one thousand, ninety-seven dollars. That we're changing our FTEs will be reduced by five FTEs and just short of one percent change from where the our budget is currently at. Want me to go through any of those? I will. There are a couple that I do want to point out. Not, not all of these are cuts either. You'll see that some of them are being passed. The second one, transfer intervention specialist to S R three. So there is being some changes to other funding sources rather than the general fund budget. But if you take a look at the line, oh, in that same vein, there's transfer to custodian salaries to school property use. We decided to do that because the CAPS collaborative is renting a lot more space than they have in the past at a few of their schools. So we are going to have, as we already do, take one Hubbard to custodian and charge it to that rental income. I'm going to take two more custodial students and charge it to the rental income.
There are Ruggles Lane?
One at Ruggles Lane and one at the middle high school, yes. There are changes in technology. Let me skip the second to last one's technology, go back to that in a second. But under that is the contingency account. That is the money that we put aside for negotiations. We're making a reduction to that. That has really nothing to do with ongoing negotiations as much as it goes to, we can't afford our budget. The technology hardware, we'd like to do something rather unique with that. We are not saying that we can cut that hardware. We need it. What I would like to propose to the committee is together with those technology hardware purchases and about sixty-seven thousand dollars worth of access points for our infrastructure. I would like the committee to consider using the IT stabilization fund. It's two hundred and eleven thousand dollars in an IT stabilization fund that was first put together back, I believe, two thousand and nine, when we tried to get our towns to fund a bond to, you know, introduce technology to all of our schools. And that has been sitting there, and we're at the point where you need to use any funding source that we have available to us. That would require two-thirds vote of the committee to transfer out of stabilization. There's a little caveat to this, that those access points are eligible for E-rate reimbursement. Now, we won't know if we will get that reimbursement until about next March, I believe. I know Mr. Walsh is online. If I made the wrong, so the wrong month, please join in. But when we, if and when we do get the E-rate reimbursement, I would ask at that time that the committee puts that money right back into the stabilization fund. Dr. Allen?
I guess the only concern I would have with that is, is it next year when the federal funds go away? And we expect to have much less money coming in next year? And this is sort of the last year of having money come to us?
Yes. The S R funds will end in June of two thousand and twenty-four. It really end in September of two thousand and twenty-four, fiscal twenty-five, but our plan is to use them by the end of next fiscal year. We have, however, planned to have money in, available in E and D, as well as school choice that will at least get us through FY twenty-five. And we are praying that we will finally get out a full harmless debt by FY twenty-six so that we will start seeing the benefit, the full benefit of the Student Opportunity Act.
Okay, so you have a plan, and it seems reasonable, and it seems doable.
I believe that is reasonable. It also helps that those sixty-seven thousand dollars worth of access points could be reimbursed up to a sixty thousand dollar limit by, I believe it's forty percent. So that's putting money back into that.
Into the fund.
Account that can be used.
Okay.
But we wouldn't know until March, you said, right?
Believe it's March that we will know whether or not we'll get it.
We typically do get E-rate reimbursement. It's not a big risk to assume that, that we will get it because it's something that we've gotten, I think, every, every year or so.
Yes, but the requirement is that we usually, the E-rate reimbursement we get right now is on our network connectivity for all of our schools. And we, we have not, not gotten that in the past. And what we use that reimbursement for at that time is to fund our refresh cycles and our hardware cycles. So yeah, we have not, not gotten that in a number of years.
Well, it was just my concern was dipping into something this year when I had thought next year was going to be much more problematic.
Actually, twenty-six, that will be very problematic, maybe.
If we don't get the funding.
So that would bring our budget to thirty-eight point eight million dollars. On the revenue side, as I said earlier, our Chapter Seventy-eight increased by fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars, and I have made that adjustment on the projected revenue. We are also increasing regional school transportation. Many of you will remember when Jay Sullivan was online, he was talking to us, and he told us that, listen, he didn't have the numbers that he could put in the full value of the reimbursement for transportation on the governor's cherry sheet. But we found out that what he really was basing it on was FY twenty-one, and he was putting it in at seventy-five percent. Our true reimbursement will be on FY twenty-three expenses, this year's expenses. And the House, the governor put it in at ninety percent reimbursement. As I say down here, hundred percent reimbursement is doubtful. But we don't believe, the superintendent and I had a conversation about this, it's highly doubtful that the Senate will go any lower than the governor. So I have made a change in this by taking last year's eligible expenses and increasing them by two and a half percent, because if you remember, our transportation contract is level for three years. And then for this year was a two and a half percent increase. So I raise those eligible expenses by two and a half percent. And I'm applying a ninety percent reimbursement, and that's why I'm coming up with a new number. I think that's reasonable as well. And then we had in the, in the past version of the budget, we put in using five hundred thousand dollars from E and D. Superintendent and I propose that we go to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars at this point. How much is in there? Do you wait for like that screen? I have no idea. It has been certified at one million, five seventy-five, nine oh one. So we both have half of it. So without the actual cherry sheet data, it is unknown if changes were made in the houses, House Ways and Means budget that affected required local contribution of member communities. Changes to that required local contribution impact the assessment calculations. So what we may need to take a look at when the Senate budget comes out is were any changes made? Because we'll need to use those new required local contributions in the final calculation that really goes to the town meeting.
If you were anticipating that would.
When?
When the cherry sheet numbers come out.
When the cherry sheet numbers come out, no.
So they basically were.
The budget, yes. Our revenue, our revenue may change. And actually, if our, if our charters, sorry, if our circuit breaker reimbursement increases, that's treated as a state grant. So what you actually do is reduce your budget to put those expenses there. But it all depends on what the other revenues come out to be. At this point, we don't see where we're going to make cuts into this budget without losing programs. That would be the next round of discussions, is losing programs. So with the changes to the budget, as I show it on slide five, and the changes to our projected revenues, this is where make that bigger or not, but this is where the assessment levels stand at this point. Barry, seven point six seven, Hardwick, four point seven one, Hubbard's to nine point zero two, Infrantry, three point eight eight, Okem, nine point four six, for an overall increase in assessment of seven point five eight. The reason that Hubbardston and Okent is so high, if you think back to public hearing where I have all my charts and graphs, Hubbardston and Okem saw increases in the required local contribution based on the town's wealth and property values. They also were the two towns that saw the largest increases in student enrollment. So those are the two main components of the assessment calculation. So when you have increases in two of those segments, when other towns had reduction in enrollment, this is how the assessments go so crazy as compared with each other. So that's all I have tonight.
Cheryl, when, when the cherry sheets come out, will we get the, the towns will get their minimum local contributions at the same?
Yes, I was, I was told by the person that actually releases them that they should be out by tomorrow afternoon. So that's what we have for you tonight. Other questions? Last slide just showed you where we are in the process. Senate Ways and Means budget generally comes out in, in June. If any of those figures that are shown on the first slide do not agree between the House and the Senate, then they go to conference committee. And that could go all the way to the summer before we know what happens to the real numbers.
So I think, Cheryl, it's fair to say, correct me if I'm wrong, that these assessment numbers will change again before town meeting. There's one hundred percent certainty that those will change because they don't include the new required.
If there is.
If, if there is a change.
Our budget may also change because the woman I spoke to today said one of the reasons the cherry sheets are being held up is because there was an enrollment reporting era for charter school students. And so DESE is recalculating everyone's charter school assessment. If your charter school assessment increases, so does your reimbursement on the revenue side. If it decreases, so does your revenue on the other side. So when those numbers finally come out with charter school, we'll see a change most likely in both revenue as well as expenses.
And what does charter school have to do with us?
We, what, if the students who live in our five towns enroll in the charter schools, I have a chart that I show when we first start our budget meetings, this district pays the tuition for them to go there. So we get, and we get reimbursement on a sliding scale for each student. So there's two numbers in our budget for paying for students that go out of our district, attend charter schools, where they go and choose to attend another school on the school choice. District pays that tuition bill by a reduction to our Chapter Seventy.
Well, that's the voucher thing. Now, we have sixty-eight kids doing that.
Going out for, I don't, I don't know the total number. I don't know the total number off the top of my head. It's definitely in Cheryl's presentation, her public hearing presentation.
And then the charter school reimbursement, is it only on a three-year?
Yeah.
To the, to the district?
Yes.
So.
You get a higher amount than the first year the student is at the charter school, less the second year, less the third year, the fourth year they're there, we get no reimbursement.
No, no reimbursement thereafter.
You still have to keep paying. You still have to keep paying?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Like no reimbursement. Do we?
Correct.
Any kids in charter schools?
I'm looking it up, Doc.
Looking it up.
Take me a minute to get there. This, this October one, and this is a rolling enrollment count, so four times a year, I believe it's every month. Every month, they take the actual FTE. So as of the October one count, so like really the first quarter, we had sixty-five students in school choice out.
Yeah, that's about what I was thinking.
And in charter, we have eleven point five.
So putting the two together, the sixty to eighty is about what our own flow is.
And then, and then the inflow of school choice, was it closer to two, two eighty?
Two eighty.
Two eighty, two is like that?
No, actually it went down.
It went down.
Two sixty?
So it's going down, Jess tells me. So we see a reduction. Every month, we get a portion of our school choice in as revenue, every month, choice in charter. And it gets adjusted each month by the number of students. You just told me we're, we're down to two fifty-seven.
Well, originally, it was five thousand voucher person. Is that what it still is?
The school choice.
Yes, we get five thousand dollars per student unless they're on an IEP. We also get the additional special education costs.
Well, that hasn't changed about twenty years then.
Never.
Since, since, since the inception.
Ninety-three. So are there any questions for Cheryl or the superintendent? Again, you're doing two things. You are making an adjustment on the overall budget and as well on the revenue perspective, as well as taking, you believe, additional two hundred and fifty thousand out of E and D to lower assessments at this time.
Yes.
Superintendent mentioned this will move again, but as we spoke last week, that you, you are looking to get assessment letters out, making, which we have to by law at a certain period of time. If we make this adjustment now on both ends, the overall budget as well as the revenue side of the budget, the next, next iteration or the next review of the budget, when are you predicting to do that? Are you waiting for?
The Senate.
The Senate? Okay.
The Senate budgets don't match the House numbers. We need to make conservative adjustments in case the Senate is higher. And when they go to conference, they go, they, they make an agreement somewhere low. I never want to, that's what like with the regional transportation. I find it highly unlikely we'll get a hundred percent reimbursement. Nobody is behind that. Nobody at DESE. I doubt the legislature is really behind it. So I didn't use a hundred percent. I used ninety. I know they won't, the Senate won't probably not go down lower than the governor.
Ninety, yeah.
But I'm not willing.
Predict.
Yeah.
Does Ann Goby have anything to say about what the Senate's gonna do?
Nothing specific, you know? I mean, she, she, she recognizes all of the challenges that, that we're facing. And I, I think, you know, it's going to work very hard, as she always does, to get the numbers up. But the last meeting that I was at where Ann and other legislators were there, they, you know, they said what we know. Usually, the governor's budget is where we get the least revenue. And through the House and the Senate, it continues to go up. So that gives me a little hope that we'll see a little more revenue in the Senate budget. But, you know, they can't promise anything. They don't, they don't know until the process plays out. So I know that area legislators are very aware of how challenging this budget is for their, for their municipalities and for their school districts. And, you know, you, if you just listen to conversations like these that are happening in communities all around us, similar conversations are happening, you know?
I think they're much more drastic.
Well, well, they are. But I mean, we may get there, Dr. Allen. I'm going to be perfectly honest with you. You know, we may get to those drastic conversations. I think it's premature to get there right now because we're hoping that we can make this work. But, I mean, there are, there are districts that are, I heard today, cutting athletics, music programs. And these are districts not very far from here. I am certainly hopeful that we will get to the point that we can get a number that our communities can handle and that we can maintain our programs. That is the, that's the goal. And, but it's going to take, as it always does, it's going to take us longer to get there than our communities would like. They want a number now. I'm sure they want a number now that they can plan on. And I, I don't think we can, we just don't have enough information to, to give them a solid number that we know is, is where we're going to land. Because as Cheryl pointed out, there are so many variables still to work out with the state budget process. So we're continuing to work at it. We're, we're watching the numbers. We're continuing to advocate and with our legislators, and that will be ongoing.
How comfortable do you feel with taking half of the E and D?
Well, Cheryl and I spent a lot of time talking about it. It, it is, we have had, after, you know, after our E and D balance is certified using seven hundred and fifty thousand, we've had, we've had lower E and D balances in the past. And so we are comfortable with that level of E and D use, given that we're continuing to try to build the, the other reserves that we have, the school choice reserve. But admittedly, school choice reserve is growing at a slower pace because our school choice enrollment has not increased. So, or is actually decreasing. So we're, you know, we're being, we're doing the, the best we can to use reserves in what we think is a prudent manner, but recognizing that if we are going to maintain programs, that's something that we have to do. We really have to do that.
Well, if area school districts are cutting music and athletics and things like that, I would think that would make us attractive, even more attractive for these voucher kids.
It could, it could. You know, I'm, I'm certainly hoping that in those communities, they're able, they're going to, some of those communities are proposing two and a half overrides. They may, they may be successful. And if they are, I was at a meeting, I think Cheryl and I were at a meeting not long ago where someone, you know, a state official said something to the effect, there are going to be more districts on one-twelve budgets this year than ever before. Now, that's, I, we certainly don't have a crystal ball, but I think that is the tenor of the conversations that superintendents are having and that with their legislators, this is a very serious problem. And for districts that are not reaping any benefits from Student Opportunity Act. And there are, I think, a hundred and nineteen of them or in that range. And so, you know, and, and some of the communities are trying to pass overrides. And if those overrides pass, I'm sure those districts will restore those programs.
Those overrides aren't gonna pass.
Well, I think it depends on the community, but, but.
Where do you ever see them pass?
Well.
Okem.
They have passed, they did pass in Okem. Yeah.
Okay. So there are some districts that I've heard that are actually doing quite well under this budget. Is that true, or maybe not out here, maybe, but sort of more toward Boston?
Yes, because of the student opportunity. Yes, because of the Student Opportunity Act, there are districts, I have one superintendent who I, is my colleague and I communicate with, who was a superintendent in an urban district who made the statement to me, in this fiscal year, he has more money than he can spend. He does not know how he's going to spend the money that he has, partially because he can't get employees, you know, he's, they're struggling with the same issue that we are, that, you know, that they just can't fill all of their positions, but
He has the money.
He's going to have the money, he has the money to fill every position that he has and more. And so there are many, there are, the districts that are getting SOA money, they are in that position. And so it's about, you know, two, about two-thirds, right, there's about three hundred and fifty school districts in the, in the state, about two-thirds of them are getting SOA funding to various degrees, some are getting tens of millions of dollars and some are getting less, much less than that. But there are also about a third of the districts that are not getting anything. And we used to be, you know, our hold harmless debt used to be at the close to second, we were the second largest hold harmless debt. If you look at the list of districts that are now in hold harmless debt, we are nowhere near the top, I think we're probably, I don't know, I'm gonna stay in the Oh, you did, okay, that's in the, right, I was gonna say we're in the thirties, right? So I guess that's progress. And I do, you know, we will come out of, we will eventually get out of this hold harmless debt, but the great increase in our, the great decrease in our hold harmless debt last year was due in great part to the addition of the preschool and, and increasing our student enrollment by some odd students because of the addition, additional preschool classrooms that we're able to add. So, you know, our, our increase in student enrollment now is really about more, more people with families moving into our district and enrolling their children in our schools. And so not, we don't have a lot of control over that, but we are hosting a school choice open house i- in the next, beginning of May, couple, couple of weeks from now, hoping to continue to, you know, attract increasing numbers of school choice students, which it's not a great revenue source, but it does help us fill empty seats in our classrooms and bring in a small amount of money for that, so it doesn't cost us more to educate those children and we get a little revenue for it, so, and that's, that's not a bad thing. And it's also given opportunities to students that they may not have in their home district.
Before we go over to Mark for, for potential motion, Cheryl, there were other handouts in the packet, can you highlight? So not only Crystal can be kind of brought up to speed of where we are and what documents mean. And again, Crystal, this is one of the toughest parts of our job as we're dealing with the budget process. And not only what we find fair, reasonable, and what is needed without cutting programs, we also are very sensitive to the needs and understanding of the towns, what they can afford and not afford. But glad that you're here, will help you in the knowledge of getting to the, to the, to the know of how this funding formulas work and our obligations. So Cheryl, could you outline what else we have?
Yeah, could I, um, could I get the screen for a second?
Of course.
Just to We have, so.
I can pull it up on here.
Is it in the drive?
Everything's
So, no, that's, okay, so I, I won't be able to use my little graph.
That's probably in one of the, that's probably in the drive.
I'll move on, so. In your packet, there's a document that's twenty-six pages long. In the blue bar, it says line item budget, FY twenty-four line item budget. This is the way in which the school committee voted to take a look at their budget. The actual budget document itself from the system is a two hundred and seventy-page document. So each of the categories here are subtotaled by the fourth segment of all the account numbers. You do get the first account number, Crystal, it's zero, zero, one dot five dot ninety-nine dot eleven-ten. So that eleven-ten, that four-digit code is what's referred to, a DESE is the function code, we are mandated to use those numbers. So those are subtotaled by that four-digit code, you see that school committee eleven-ten. So that subtotal that is highlighted in gray on the line item report is then brought over to the report, the two-page document that's highlighted in gold. Let's take a look at school committee alone, the first category of school committee eleven-ten is the first line on this report, eleven-ten, okay? So those subtotals come over onto this report, and then they're further subtotalled by the format by which this school committee decided it was going to approve a budget or allow budget changes, transfers between categories. So if you take the gold subtotals on this report, bring it over to the one-page document in blue, and the same way it goes, the one that is highlighted on that intermediary report is now a line item on this report. And then this report is subtotalled by what's called undesignedated and regular education costs. Those are terms that the Department of Education uses, and that's one of the ways that we balance our budget and approve our budget. Then we have special education costs, and then debt is by itself. And when you add those three subtotals together, you can see in the fifth column over, which is FY twenty-four, PP three is our proposed budget number three for the April assessments is thirty-eight million, eight, twenty-seven, nine, thirty-four. Then I do some comparisons between this version that I brought to you tonight to the last version, and then this version to last year, which is the FY twenty-three, which is six point nine one percent. So I created a little graphic that I show in meetings, and it just does exactly what I just said, how we subtotal our reports and how you read them. So this is all available to the public on our, on our website, I'm sure Jess will get it up there sometime tomorrow or Monday. And we're gonna have a new website soon, so we'll have our own area where the budgets will all be listed, and also the quarterly reports will be just for transparency purposes. This is the system-generated report that I use to create these documents. This is forty-three page long, pages long, like I said, the detail behind it is two hundred and seventy pages. Please don't ask me to go through.
Okay.
And Crystal, all of the presentations from the very beginning are on our website too, under administration and budget FY twenty-four, so.
Anyone else have a question on the numbers? So together with the budget adoption, I, I don't know if it matters, but I, I think you kind of have to take stabilization use vote first, whereas the other one is null and void.
Okay, Mark.
So both to use IT stabilization fund in FY twenty-four. Motion is to move to appropriate one hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-five cents on the IT stabilization fund to purchase IT hardware and access points during the twenty twenty-three slash twenty twenty-four school year. Any such funds reimbursed through the E-rate program shall be redeposited into the stabilization fund subsequent to the vote of the school committee.
Second.
Okay.
This is a two, needs a two-thirds vote in a stabilization account, you need a two-thirds vote to put money in and two-thirds to take the money out.
Okay, any other further comments? Seeing and hearing none, roll call, please.
Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Lanan?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Garvey?
Yes.
Ms. Cartier?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Wigler?
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes. Mark?
This is now the motion for the budget adoption for April assessment letters. Motion is to move to adopt FY twenty-four budget in the amount of thirty-eight million, eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars, on which to calculate April assessments to member communities as required by seventy-one, section sixteen.
Second.
Okay.
Projected revenue sources include sixteen million, nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars in chapter seventy-eight, one million, two hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars in regional transportation reimbursement, nine hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars in district revenues and reserves, including seven hundred and fifty thousand from excess and deficiency E and D to offset member town assessments, and ten thousand from excess and deficiency E and D for a contribution to the OPEB trust fund.
Still second.
Still second, okay. And just, again, I don't, just to make a, a quick note, Mark, you mentioned thirty-eight million, eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-four?
Forty-three. No, it's, I'm sorry, it is forty-four. When, when you take, when you take this many accounts that are, then become all rounded to full numbers, it's rounding, so I'll, I'll adjust, it is forty-four.
Forty-four, okay, just wanted to make sure, because I saw two different numbers. That's a dollar.
It's a dollar.
It's a dollar.
It's a dollar.
Okay, that adjustment, not a problem. Motion made, seconded, any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, roll call, please.
Dr. Allen? Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Willanan?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Garvey?
Yes.
Ms. Cartier?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Wigler?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Before we adjourn, there's one more document here on the projected revenue sources from Quavon. Do you want to highlight this document as well?
I'm sorry.
And then we'll adjourn afterwards since we've made the adjustments.
So the way in which the projected revenue sources are put together is by type of funding source. So you see the first block is from our state aid, and so those are the numbers that changed tonight with the houseways and means number, the chapter seventy-eight, and the second line, chapter seventy-one, which is transportation aid, also known as regional transportation reimbursement. So those two numbers have changed. And then the next section is for district revenue, so those are our revenues and reserves that we are putting towards funding the budget. And we've increased the second line, if excess and deficiency E and D from five hundred thousand to seven fifty. The next section actually takes the three blocks, the required local contribution of the member town operating assessment, that is what is sent to us from the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Schools. And those numbers come directly from course that the town files with the Department of Revenue. The above required local contribution is a calculation that gets done. So when you take the, the budget number and you subtract the revenue sources that are coming from state aid, revenue sources that are coming from district revenue, and the required local contribution, you have an amount that is, does not have a funding source. And that amount of money is what is a portion to each member town based on their student enrollment this year as of, as of October first. So that's where that fluctuation comes by, some towns have lost resident enrollment while others have gained, there's a bit enrollment. And then you add those two blocks together and it comes down to total member town operating assessment. Earlier in our budget process this year, we had a capital budget of five hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, all of which has been cut. So that's all. Then, because I did have capital assessment, I retotaled these total member assessments. After that is long-term debt revenue. We have one project that still remains to have debt on it, and it is when we replaced the atrium room from the middle high school, and then we re-panelled the whole outside of the middle high school. And they still, I think that goes into FY, is it twenty-eight?
I think so.
Um, I definitely was down it as well, but that is calculated by a formula as well, but that's based on the number of students each town has residents enrolled in the district from K to twelve, actually pre-K to post-grad, rather than going to just the elementary school and the high school. And then it all totals up in this number here that's on this report. Nine forty-four.
Nine forty-four, yeah.
The, the budget, and will show that the revenue sources are also going up by the same amount of other social analysis.
Local contributions, they are historically high, is that, is that true or not?
Historically.
Are they higher than they were in past years? Yes, for each town? Yes.
Well, yes, but there's, there's a huge calculation involved, Jess, can you bring that up?
Yeah, I, I know, it's probably.
Right, so that's, that's adjusted every year, and then, again, if you go back to the public hearing presentation.
I'm just wondering if, if.
Well, everything goes up, Mr. Nutter, have you ever seen?
Yeah.
Let's go to slide.
I was wondering if you could produce.
Slide number ninety-one.
A history of like the last ten years. Would it be, would that be, would that illustrate anything for us or not? I don't mean right now, but.
What are you asking?
If you could, if, if maybe you could make a history, like when we go to town meetings.
I believe I already have it, I just want to get to the screen first and then, how did you close that?
Yeah, well, I did, yeah, I'm getting there.
Yeah, I'm not saying right this minute, but, you know, maybe you're the.
I believe I have that already done. I can show that as well.
Maybe a slide by slide with the.
For one tonight.
Page ninety-one.
Each one of our five member towns this year is below target share.
All right, I remember we talked about that, yeah.
Which means the required, required local contribution should be higher.
Should be high, right.
Okay.
Everyone is behind, everyone, with the implementation of, implementation of the Student Opportunity Act and foundation budgets being increased so dramatically, part of the, the formula is chapter seventy-eight minus, you're, you're, the foundation budget minus chapter seventy-eight is required local contribution. So when that budget goes up so much, required local contribution to go, to go up, you'll see, this is, so this is the page that does, okay, and I know you can't see it.
I still have it on.
But this is a formula that calculates what each regional required local contribution should be. And again, for Okam alone, let's see if I can make this bigger, because I can't see it on my laptop. So Okam should be, their target local share is fifty-six point three seven percent, and they're contributing at fifty-one point six seven, so it should be five percent higher.
Oh.
Right, but now, as you're saying that, when the state calculates, they don't calculate going at five percent, they, they let towns go increment or slowly or a percentage.
Yep. Only i- if they're below, so.
Right.
In that yellow box, and I know you probably can't see it very good, because I can't. No, you can't. Okay, so the shortfall, if the shortfall is what? If your shortfall is between two point five and seven point five percent, you get a one percent increment from what the formula calculates. So.
Call it every.
You should, you should have been, should have been at fifty-six point three seven, your formula came from the fifty-one point one eight, so you should have been charged an extra percentage. But if you fall short, if you're greater than seven point five, which Okam is not, you would have got a two percent increment charge. And your question regarding, do I have history? I believe it's already done, so I could get that to you, is whatever you'd like. Historical data, see. I have assessment data. My, my historical data sheet has chapter seventy, state aid, our budget, state data percentage of the budget, budget use of E and D, and assessment increase, it does not have required local contribution.
Is that something that could be done without too much work for us if we need that, to articulate that at town meetings if we need it?
There's no, there's no work for you.
I know, aside from speaking.
This is, this is the problem that can arise.
Okay.
Okay? A regional school district is treated much differently than a town or a city, okay? So as the budget moves between the governor's budget, the House, the Senate, and Conference Committee, if they make any changes to chapter seventy-eight or any of the other components that require local contribution. However, if it changed, if it changed in the House budget, we are mandated by DESE regulation to use those new we are mandated by DESC regulation to use those new numbers in our next round of budget discussions. We've had to do that and it's ugly. I think you remember Dr. Marshall saying they went to the legislature and you cannot do this, you cannot do this. It's killing our member towns. They did it for one year, they didn't do it. If a regional school district has their budget approved and the House or Senate changed those numbers, you don't have to go back to them and change the numbers. And that never happens for us. We never have it approved. We have very late town meetings.
Right.
I had a business manager, now district's going to escape me. A business manager contacted me two weeks ago. He was going into a one twelfth budget. What's the process, he asked me. So I said, oh, I have a whole highlighted document for you. He was already done, they had March town meetings. There are a lot of districts that have April town meetings, May town meetings. We go right to the end of June. Lucky for us because we need every dollar we can get out of the budget process. But there are some that will have their budget passed by the required two thirds of their member towns and the House or Senate numbers may change and they don't have to. So if I go back and get the history of what DESC has online or DOR has online.
It's not gonna.
It may not match a document that I did three years ago and I don't want to be called on it.
No, I, I hear you.
Because it won't matter.
Lee?
Yeah, so you know, you have to decide if you want to approach something or, or to, to state something at town meeting, you have to decide what you want to throw out there. I mean, this was in our presentation. I've been sitting here for twenty odd years and I still have to pay extreme attention to what Cheryl says. And I know her stuff is right and maybe I'm, you know, the, the one that needs the most spoon feeding here, but I've been used to this. You stand up at a town meeting, you try and throw ten percent of what she's saying, you've lost them. I mean, you've lost them.
Right.
So you, you have to look at the numbers that people can grasp, you know? Here's how much the state, you know, if you want to run ten years or something, here's what the state gave everybody ten, twelve, fifteen years ago, here's what they're giving now. You know, you see the decrease. You have to give something that's somewhat simplified, for lack of a better term, that people can, can get there with. Because you're not going to have an hour at town meeting. If they give you five to eight minutes, you're lucky. So you have to shoot out what you want to shoot out. You have to make sure it's, it's relatively simple to follow. And there will still be, be people who are, who are like either in disbelief or it's like, oh gee, I don't understand it. But to try and go through a whole bunch, you know, let's take ten years of this and twelve years of this, fifteen years of that, you lose them after five minutes. I mean, you, you have to decide what's important to put out there.
So I have to say that I think our, our greatest gain in getting some support from a member town in the last ten years was from the town of Okem. Because not only Mr. Nutter as a school committee member, but they had two finance committee members, Claire Hendra and.
Steve LeBeau.
No, Rochette, Mr. Rochette.
They attended seminars that DESC and Department of Revenue put on. And they began to understand the complexity of the formula. And they turned from being adversaries to helping us inform the town voters in Okem of, of what it means. Right now, we're dealing with someone who, who does not care, said, do not care what the formula is, I don't like our number. Well, I'm sorry, but, and I guess the comment, Mr. James Chamberlain is here, but I guess the comment is when Cheryl DeValle retiring, because maybe the process will change when she's gone. Oh, I don't have control over anything, zero. I don't control anything. But he doesn't care to learn and it's not going to be helpful for us on the town floor.
Is that helpful?
It is, yes.
Dr. Allen?
Yeah, I think the most helpful, simple thing I have ever heard here is that with the state portion of our budget staying the same or going down, whatever percentage we go up, the town has to take the whole thing. So if we go up X number of dollars, the state portion stays the same, the town has to pay a hundred percent of X. The state doesn't pay their portion of the raise. And, and I say that for new committee members because I think that's the simplest, easiest way of describing to somebody what our situation is.
It is, but they don't want to hear that. You know, they still think there's some sort of voodoo out there that that's the right.
Yes, they do.
Right?
Right, absolutely.
You know, when you say the state used to give us ten dollars, but now they're only giving us five dollars so the town has to make up the difference, they don't get that.
In fiscal oh two, the state aid as a portion of our budget was sixty four point eight percent. We got sixty five percent of the revenue we needed from the state. This year it's forty four percent. So if our budget is going up by a hundred dollars, we're going to get forty four percent from the state, but the other fifty six percent is coming from our towns. When we didn't, when, when we only got, let me, let me, let me get you that number. When we only get our increase in chapter seventy eight is point seven percent.
Here?
Point seven percent. So if that's forty four percent of our, our revenue comes from them, but we're only getting an increase of less than one percent, that budget increase of seven percent becomes fourteen percent. I mean, if you bring it down to a dollar level, people understand a little bit better.
I remember the chart in one of your other thing, present, presentations, said over seventeen years are the increase in revenue was seven point four four percent. But the increase, increase in what the towns have to pay is ninety nine percent over that same seventeen year period. I mean, that's just a staggering number to me. And seventeen percent increase over.
States stays the same.
Seven percent over seventeen years is nothing. It's like less than half a percent.
Well, the states, the states' amount of money for us each year has steadily decreased every single year since FY oh two. Every single year.
Well, you just said, you have that in the, on the public hearing, you have that under the Quavon state aid history from FY oh two to FY twenty four. So it is in here, what, that goes, that shows very clearly, which has been in for at least past two or three years. I think you've been putting that, every year and putting that in the chart. Sorry, I've been here for sixteen and I apologize, but this is one of the best charts.
Forward, this is all my work.
And this is one of the best charts that we use when we do go and speak and not only town meeting, but when you talk to folks that, as Dr. Allen just alluded to, when at one point the state gave us more monies and their obligations and they have lessened that. Remember the year when Governor Patrick cut us in June, a million dollars or the heck it was? And then, you know, we had to make adjustments all that summer? And then I believe that was another one twelfth year for us, maybe?
That was, that was FY oh nine. Our budget was cut in June of one point eight million, but it was filled with federal funds and we had to scramble, so.
So it's on page fifty five. And that's one of the best information to be able to understand as Lee's alluding to.
Peggy says they refer to it as voodoo. I refer to it as math. I know, I know, I totally agree, but they don't want to hear it. You know, they just suddenly block it.
Yeah, the focus, unfortunately, the, I think the focus on the town side is, is our budget. They don't really consider the revenue side of the picture and that's what, that's, that's the problem. So our real problem is not that our budget is increasing extraordinarily or exponentially, it's that the revenue to support it is shifting from the state to the, to the local government. And that's, that's the bottom line. And no one, we don't have control over that, nor do the towns. But the focus, you know, I, I think there's, there's likely a mindset out there that, well, if your revenue is decreasing, then your budget should decrease proportionately. That's not possible, right?
And if the number of kids decrease, the budget should go down.
Yes, yes, sir.
Which is equally not possible.
Agreed.
And something that I think that we've all spoken highly and continue to support is the programming at Quavon. But only that brings the school choice children that for some reason are attending here, that see the good programming. But with ROTC, AP, IB, sports, music, the arts, theater. Jeez, I think, I think last week, we just heard we got the pathway for business. Here we are again. Administration goes after the grants F everywhere they can. And not, not, not only do we have manufacturing, we have business now. And then what's the third?
IT.
IT, yeah, IT.
When our kids go around the world too.
And our kids.
There was a thing in France, there was a thing on Facebook today, they're going to France. Washington DC kids are coming back.
Coming back tonight.
Tonight.
So.
Yeah, but those could and could not be selling points to our local community. True peddlerama, well, I mean, they don't realize it. Their own fundraising.
They are.
There's a lot of other issues related to it. But when they hear that, ah, they're over in France right now, you know, there's little, some people have a strange reaction to that. And, and the bottom line is, you know, Dr. Allen's right. The simplest number is, we used to get sixty seven percent, now we get.
Forty four percent.
I mean, that's, that's similar and the number of kids that come here versus the kids that go out. So I mean, i- if somebody really listens to it, they understand that, you know, it's really not our fault and we still provide a quality education.
Yes, we do.
I could just, you give an example. In FY twenty, when we finished, our budget was up one point nine percent. The state gave us.
Well, she's calculating that, Barry members. Jess contacted me, they want to do a scholarship thing, the first Monday in May. So I figure, I, I would say Ruggles Lane, first Monday in May, six thirty.
Yeah, well, kind of notice, okay, we'll go.
Yeah, well, it's just.
I just didn't want to participate since it's not on the agenda, just talking about it. So that's why I just want to, we'll go through Jess. That's why, yeah.
So the budget increase for FY twenty was one point nine percent. That was our budget increase. The state only gave us an increase of point three five percent in additional chapter seventy eight. That equaled assessment increases to Haversen of six point three percent and Dubreiter's six point two percent. And they would say to us, why is your budget up six point two percent? Our budget is not up six point two percent, our budget's up by one.
One point nine.
Percent. And that's what they, 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 they focus on their assessment as being our budget and that's just not the case.
Good.
Same year, Hardwicks saw a reduction of one point eight percent in their assessment. That all depends on how many of your kids are going to school and how wealthy you are based on your town income and your town property values.
And Cheryl created a very interesting chart. You may remember last year, we were trying to address this misconception that she just described. And so she created a, a table and a, and a graphic that tried to point out the, that there was not a correlation, a predictable correlation between our budget increase and individual town assessment increases on any given year. And I don't, I, we presented that to all of the finance committees in our, in our meetings last spring with them. I'm not sure it helped, but it is quite, right, it is, it's, it's.
There's really no correlation.
No correlation at all.
Okay.
Um.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, and we pointed out certain, certain similar years. So in a year, for example, I'm making these numbers up, but in a year where our budget increase was one point nine percent, a town might have a six percent increase in their assessment. In another year where we had a two percent budget increase, essentially the same budget increase, the town assessment might have been three percent. So, you know, we, we helped them try to look at, look, these two years, our budget increase was very, very similar. But look at the disparity in your town assessment in that, in, in those same years where our, where what we control, the budget increase was exactly the same. So I think we could, we could, that is another piece of information. When we work with town officials that we can, we can, we have as a, as a resource that we can to try to help them understand that isn't something that we would obviously discuss at town meetings, but.
Exactly. Is there any other questions for Cheryl or Mark or anybody?
Will we adjourn?
Adjourn, is there a second? And good evening and thank you.